And we'll start with a public hearing 2024 on the General Assistance Ordinance. Any comments? Concerns? And we will close the public hearing on the General Assistance Ordinance. And approval of the agenda?
I have a September RSU 21 School Board, a September 17th meeting update. And I did attend tonight's meeting a little bit just before this meeting, so I'll just give an update of what was there tonight.
September 12th, RSU Finance Committee.
I had a couple of things that came in. One from a resident on Route 1 near Proctor Road sent you a letter. I don't know how much you want to get into that tonight, and then I have a request from the staff here at the office, sent it around Christmas, that holiday.
And under managers report?
Ten if you'd like. Both of them or just the, okay?
Anything else for you, Ken?
Yep.
Public comments on any non-agenda items? What? Can you come up to the table?
Since I did this, and I have this.
It's already on.
Dorothy Gregoire. I know I did a message, private message, Dan, but I didn't have time to email everybody, but this came to me via Facebook that people are using our dump that are not Arundel taxpayers. Is anyone aware of that? Do we have any proof? And what, so I know it, they were like, everyone I know, and this was a Kennybunk resident, we just go to Arundel because it's such a pain in the butt for Kennybunk. All my friends, everyone I know goes to Arundel for that reason.
It is on the agenda to discuss tonight.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, stickers at the transfer station, so stick around.
Yeah, you gave me, you gave me that call, I called you back and I put it on the agenda.
Yeah, but I do have something else too, and you're probably going to hit it with committee for the school board, but I don't know how many people are following the school board. Lots going on there. I've attended the last two or three. It's, it's quite saddening for a resident that the consolidation happened in 2009. You know how hard I worked for that mandated top, take down the administration costs. Our budget is so, so high for administration right now in RSU 21. And there's just constantly stuff happening that is not with the taxpayers' interest. The latest being HR director was hired at the same salary, which is the highest in the state of Maine for an HR. Because we lost a position, she got hired at the same exact amount, again, the highest in the state of Maine, without the credentials. So I know we have representatives, we have a few on the board. I have no idea the procedure, but it feels like they're not doing their job. Because superintendent is spending our money like it is not hers, which it's not. So very disappointed in that, and I'm looking forward to work, Dan. That's the second.
Okay. All right, thank you. And.
I do want to say something on the, on the public forum. I got, starting from Friday afternoon, yeah, early afternoon, I got a handful of calls and throughout the weekend calls, texts on comments that were made by a school board member and what this board is going to do about it. And I just want to be clear to the folks that are listening, as I have expressed to everybody that's contacted me, this board has no position on that. It comes from the general public. The only position that this board has is once the proper steps are taken, then we put it up for a vote. So I just want to be clear with that and making sure that people understand that.
Okay, any other comments? Approve the minutes of September 9th. Motion's made. Do we have a second?
And you go second to that?
All in favor? Okay. Let's go on to committee and board reports. Dan, go right ahead with your.
All right, so the first one was the Tuesday, September 17th RSU 21 School Board Meeting held at the gym. The previous meeting was, the agenda had stated a, just a regular board meeting. And when it came time for the meeting to happen, the chair said, hey, this is actually a workshop. Public comment is not to be taken during a workshop. The whole area, we had our meeting here that night, but the whole, the whole boardroom, the hallway was filled with people that wanted to make comments. So they shut everybody off and what they decided to do is have a meeting on the 17th, which was a Thursday, for a public comment. So they had, the agenda item was for 30 minutes. Three minutes a person, give your comments, and then they were going to move on. After 30 minutes, they made a motion to extend it for another 15 minutes. There were a couple of board members that voted against it, but it passed to continue on. So then they continued on. And when that was done, there were a couple of board members that wanted to make comment, and the chair said, no, shut them off. Gave a quick update on the labor contract, very quick update, and then shut the meeting off and then closed the meeting, and that was that. That was the September 17th meeting. Tonight's meeting, I was not going to attend, but they changed the agenda at the last minute. They added an executive session for investigation of complaints against, against a personal persons. So I went to attend the meeting just to see if anything was coming from the board, any discussion, any what have you. By the time I left, I left at 6:35, 6:40. I had no comment at all about the happenings of the last meeting from the chair, so I'm not sure what's going to come of it. But there was a board member that, once the meeting went back to public, was no longer present, so I'll just leave it at that, and that's, that's all that was discussed that I was able to gather at tonight's meeting.
Okay, any comments on that? I'm going to report the RSU Finance Committee meeting of September 12th. The first thing they did was elect a new chairman, and Brittany Gerth was elected as the new chair of the Finance Committee. There are at least usually three members of the school board that are there, or three or four members that are there to vote because it is a finance committee. And they talked about the outstanding RFPs, they do have RFPs outstanding for two vans, and the update on the ADP payroll software. They're almost done, they do have some integration work that they are working on. And they are working on updating the APTA, whatever APTA funds accounting software is. And they've changed our meetings, and I have to double check this, from Thursday now to Tuesdays. And the superintendent did mention when they were talking about students, that there were 2,260 students in the RSU. The finance director gave the reports on the finances. And it's looking as though year end right now is looking pretty good. Out of districts, special education is where they, of course, they've saved the most money because they always have to put a lot of money away in case they have an out of district person. Salaries and stipends was over because of the cost of substitutes. And let's see, where do they? They are also looking at benefit plans because that hasn't been done in years. And their employee benefits actually was, was $160,000 less than what they had budgeted for. The big, the big difference was in long-term substitutes for teachers. Because their substitutes, they have teachers that are out on leave that are being paid, and they're also being paid for the substitutes that are taking their place. And they talked about whether some of these substitutes are based on hourly or daily. And a lot of it is based on the education and the time that they're subbing. They talked about the stipends for the coaches, substitute positions, and what constituted a full-time, an FTE, a full-time person. And could some of these substitutes actually be full-time, and they are looking into that. There was another one that was, oh, the, when you looked at the techni, the line for technical supplies, it was, it was overdrawn, well, the balance. They had budgeted $51,000 and they adopted $60,000 and they spent $500 because they had bought, that was the cost of buying the new Chromebooks. So that will have to be adjusted somewhere else. And then they went to the, he always does some graphs to explain what he did. I'll give all of these to Keith, and that was mostly what went on at the finance meeting.
He's still at 7:30? He's still doing it at 7:30?
No, actually, they, they had changed it to 8:15, and now they've changed it to 8:30. Oh, and we met the benefits and payroll and benefits person, new person, her name is Sandra Bull. She was there, and so wasn't the HR director, Don Terium. They were both there. Okay, we have some more comments about the school board.
Did you ask for more comments? That would sound so sorry. Do you intend?
Would you? Yes. We're talking about school board and and finances.
Thing that, you know, I went with the administration being so heavy. And I just think there's a lot, a lack of confidence in our superintendent. We have, she has to hire, we have had to hire a communications person, and how many HR do we, do we, do we know how many HR we have? Never mind the one that we just got hired at the top, okay? So I just don't know where a town, you know, if we don't have our school board members looking out for tax, how our tax money is paid. Are we really just at the mercy of who we elect in there? Because we can't do anything about the superintendent, right? That's all school, school board.
So, you know, these comments need to be shared with our representatives on the school board and attend the meetings, you know, especially, you know, the, the budget issue, you know, what has a tendency to happen is people wait till the district meeting, and they make complaints at the district meeting. Well, it's been two, three months the school has been working on the budget. So attend those meetings early on and voice your concern rather than at the district meeting, you know? I mean, Velma attends these finance meetings, they're open to the public. So people need to get involved and, and, you know, start attending these meetings.
So, so the budget is being worked on right now for next year?
No, it'll start when, like, in, I think it starts in either late January or February, right?
Yes, they will start working on it. The superintendent will give the instructions to all of the schools and all of the department heads. They will start the budget meetings, and those meetings usually do start at, at 8 o'clock in the morning and will run for two or three hours. And each department head and each school will come in and present their budget to the finance committee. Answer any questions or anything that they have. And yes, the public is invited to those meetings, but there isn't a whole lot of public input at those meetings.
And during the regular school board meetings, following those, sometimes they'll bring, you know, they'll bring those up, right? They'll talk about the finance committee met. Every meeting has an update on all the various committees. So that's the time for the public to kind of start asking questions. They have a first reading of the budget, they have a second reading of the budget, and that's when comments need to be made, and, and, you know, by the time it gets to the district meeting, I wouldn't say it's too late, but, you know, it, they're under the gun, it's better to try to head this off early on.
I know, and then you guys were all aware, right? They, they deducted this, the budget up by $400,000, right? I don't know what that even did, I don't know. Are we able to see how they're moving that? Because it was taken out of administration, right? Just kind of sending point home. But, you know, they can move it anywhere. How do you find out where they're moving that?
I think you might want to send a request for information to the finance director and ask the finance director how that $400,000 is being moved around.
He did make an update a few meetings ago about where some of that money is coming from. And he did lay out where they took that $400,000 out. Some of it was legal, I forget what else it was, and I had reported on that too, but there was, there were some things that they were able to pay prior to closing out last year's budget. So they were able to do that, and then they pulled out some other money, but.
Some of it came from special ed, the, the out of district placement for special ed. If we get one child that has to have out of different placement, I mean, they put a big placeholder there, that's a big amount of money. So they can, this year, they're, they're using some of that to put other places.
I think that's it, except I'm just, I'm really, it's really sad, it really is. There's a lot of the special ed department that I think that's missing too, so my kids are, so selfish, but like, it's all.
Well, when you end up with a teacher who is on, say, on leave, a long-term disability, and she's getting paid, she's getting paid from a line, they have to get a substitute in to cover for that, she's getting paid from a line for substitutes. So last year, they have had quite a few that teacher's getting paid, the substitutes are also getting paid, so that was a line that they had to work with to try and find enough money to cover everything. So, but take your concerns, you know, just to, to our school board members.
Thank you, guys.
All right, managers report the draft for the Arundel Recreation Department?
Well, yeah. As, as you recall, back in August, we, there were some pending issues that were being expressed to the Recreation Department in reference to their continued use of the school, particularly their office and storage area within the school. What I've tried to do with this, the information that I've presented to you is to try to solidify, solidify in writing some sort of memorandum of understanding between the Town of Arundel Select Board and the School Board to, to ensure that the continued use of the, of the office space and storage that was developed and built within the, the building will continue to be that of the Town of Arundel and its Recreation Department. I tried to express within the memorandum that I've put together, and obviously, it's just a draft, you know, comments from you folks as we go through this process, but again, trying to outline that that the office, the full-time office staff has been located within the school since 2003. In 2009, again, the, the, the building was owned by the Town of Arundel, and then the consolidation agreement and voters of all three communities voted to begin RSU 2021, which happened in July of '09. The Recreation Department continued to remain in the MLDA school. The school then took on, I think it was in 2014 or 2015, an expansion. 2016, an expansion of the, of the school, MLDA school, floated bonds for that, which we participate in, obviously. And in the new development, there was a office space and storage that was placed in there for the town, for the town's Recreation Department. So what I'm trying to do with the, with the document is to acknowledge the longstanding relationship that our Recreation Department has had with the MLDA school when it was a town school, as well as when it was an RSU 21 facility. And to have all parties acknowledge that by signing a memorandum, so we can sort of have some writing in our hands that, that, things that have happened in the past where questions have come up as to if there's any written agreement between the, the town and the RSU in reference to this, the office space, that we have something that's now in writing that we can look back upon and understand that this is a longstanding relationship that the, that the town has had with the school before, and it was an RSU, and now that it is an RSU, so I think in a nutshell, I provided, also provided to you, when this all became, became a little bit of a issue, I immediately contacted the superintendent to express our, our views on the inherent use of the building and wanted to put together a meeting so we could address those issues. She wrote back, she said that at this point, it was not something that they were anticipating for the upcoming school year, but it's something that comes up from time to time through the last several years. You know, why is the rec department there, and if we need the space, what can we do in order to move them out? So I want to be in a position that we sort of try to put that to bed, and that's why I put together the draft for you to review. In the, in the packet I gave you, I, I tried to provide some examples of some of our relationship with MLDA and the RSU in terms of the memorandum of understanding that we had with the lot. Because as you know, we own the build, we own the the playground, and, not the playground, the athletic facilities behind the school that are used by the rec department and by the school for various activities. We still own that. We also owned the entranceway going in. And we found that, once the lots were split, became an, we had to, there was a substandard lot size for coverage, and we had to provide them the entrance, which we did through a memorandum, and gave ourselves a place just west of the building itself for entrance, if in fact we haven't needed it. But we had all those done, so I, I just wanted to point out that our continued relationship with them has been a positive one, in which we've, we've assisted the RSU in their future developments of the school, their continued use of the athletic fields. And sort of want to provide that in whatever memorandum we send to them in the hopes that they understand that this has been a long-term, ongoing relationship. And obviously, I'll take any comments on the MOU and any changes that need to be made, any thoughts? I don't expect this to be ironed out, obviously, tonight, but I'm looking for your, certainly for your guidance and any history that you think may, needs to be added to it.
Dan, you want to maintain the same office space and storage space that you have now, right?
Like, together, the expansions, it would make more sense. So it will, for us, not having a room like for maybe there yet.
Well, I, I think this memorandum ought to identify the area, you've got a map here, a sketch here, even attach it, it's exhibit.
Okay.
Say, this is the office space that will, I don't want to get into a situation where this says, you know, you get office space in the, there, but all of a sudden they started moving you someplace.
Yeah, they put it in a closet. It's a good point. That's a good point, Tom.
And kind of identify, it just shows a picture, but it doesn't show the size.
Yeah, we can, yeah, those are good suggestions, we'll make sure we put those in.
Your footage, plus your storage building outside, which was built by the, the group from the high school.
You should make reference to that too as well. I guess the, the other thing is, is that do you think, do you think I'm going down the right direction in terms of trying to get a, a document signed by all parties involved? So we have something concrete to, to lay a hat on in the future? I, I just don't want this to continue to come up.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
You know, I'll supply it with some.
Okay. Give me some comments, suggestions, okay? Okay.
Yeah, we'll get this done just as soon as possible.
He'll give you the right jar going.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll continue to work on it.
Yeah.
We're all set, Jen.
Yeah.
The other thing, I had a resident on New Road reach out to me, and I think I've provided in your packet, the, the email that he's, that he sent me in terms of wanting to try to reduce the speed of New Road because of the frequency of people going over the posted speed limit. I referred back to him a couple of things. Number one, I, I thought that the, the speed posted is the prudent speed for the road. I didn't think it was a, it was a posted speed issue. I think it's more of a enforcement and probably a traffic calming or signage issue that may assist the residents that live on New Road with those, with those issues. However, I did provide to him a copy of the MOT, the MDOT's process that needs to be undertaken if, in fact, we were going to request a speed study in reference to that. And I, the reason I have it on there tonight is that I want to provide, get your comments of whether or not my thought process on the posted speed and things that can be done without going to a full-blown speed study are more appropriate. So I can refer, get back to this gentleman as to what we may be doing in the future to try to assist in getting the speed slowed down. I did reach out to, in lieu of that, I reached out to the Sheriff's Department, expressed concerns of folks in the speed. They indicated to me that they were going to put that on their monitoring to, to get a better presence on the road. I also understand that the, across from New Road, almost directly across, there's a automobile maintenance facility called The Shop, which works on high-performance vehicles and things like that, and I've been told that from time to time, they'll come across the road and speed up New Road, turn around and speed back to see, you know. to see, you know, if the car is performing as they want it to perform. So I've asked the code officer to stop, make a visit to them to, if that is occurring, to try to curb that that activity if possible. So those are the avenues that I think are more appropriate as opposed to going for speed, but obviously, I'll take my lead from from you folks as to what you think we should do.
Well, I think that posting, again, it is, it's not the fact that it's posted that we should drop the speed, but the fact that it should be reinforced. But when you put a sheriff up there and the speed limit on that road is going to be thirty-five for everybody traveling that road. But the speed limit going down the Limerick Road is going to be fifty and sixty miles an hour. And then you're going to get complaints from the Limerick Road. And then they put the sheriff on the limit growth and it slows down. And then they're doing that same thing on the River Road. So unless we actually have have four, five, six officers that can sit on these roads consistently, it's going to solve the problem for that small timeframe. But it's not going to solve the problem long term. Even reducing the speed isn't going to solve the problem long term, because you drop that speed to twenty-five, it won't matter, they're still going to do fifty.
I brought I brought this up before about the signs that Kenny Bunk uses, and it's amazing how many people see that sign flash and hit their brakes. I know they're expensive. You've got a price of like fifteen thousand, right, or something?
I can't remember. Yeah, they were, I know the signs you're talking about, the ones that have the funny face on them and they and they have the solar, and then they switch them around from location to location to try to calm the.
I think it might be smart money spent in this town to buy like three or four of them and
place them.
Put one on Limerick Road, put one on River Road, put one on New Road and I don't know if people think that they're that they're police issued and they have cameras in them or something, but it's amazing how many people approach those. It flashes too fast and they hit their brakes. It might just be a
Right.
easier fix than.
Yeah, I I, you know, I I think posting the speed, even if you could get it, the speed study done, I don't think it's going to be.
Not going to do anything.
No.
Enforcement, we don't have the.
Enforcement and education. Yeah, I think so, too. I I don't think the speed's the answer. I think, you know, coming up with another transportation plan. I expressed to him, you know, some of the things of what what the MDOT expressed to us on one eleven, when we met him with him out there, that you know, they, again, I think Jason signs are part of the process that they're going to do out on one eleven, where data can be collected from that, so we can, we can track that. The speed and the behavior on those, at what times during the day. They are going to put in the fog, the fog lanes on the sides of the road and double white, double yellow lines in the middle to try to make the appearance that the road is not as wide as it is to maybe calm the traffic down. And then appropriate signage to, you know, caution that thirty-five miles an hour is strictly enforced. Something along those lines may may help as well. So I think that's the avenue to go.
Can we use, can we use the?
ARPA funds?
Yeah.
We can use them for transportation issues, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we can pick up a couple of, couple of signs, couple of those signs with those funds. Do we have any ordinance issues with continuously lit signs in certain areas or?
I don't think so.
I don't think they're continuously lit. It's a case of when the vehicle is coming, it sets the off.
I didn't know if like the LED lights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is a problem in certain areas, I don't.
Yeah.
Couple of those flashing signs and showed up on one eleven recently. They don't seem to be operational yet.
They are, okay.
There's one south, west, one east.
Okay.
East of Old Limerick Road.
Okay.
And there's one just west of the town line coming from this.
Okay.
They're not operational yet.
Okay, that must be part of the plan that they were saying they were going to put those up and try to get them up and running. Okay.
I mean, you know, we have an issue throughout the whole town with speeding. Not only speeding, but burning tires and, you know.
Well, that that's become a phenomenon. I was driving around on my motorcycle on on Sunday, and almost every intersection I went through, North Burwick and Sanford and Springville, there's there's rubber marks, cars going off roads. They're doing those donuts in every intersection that you can get at. So I know it's become a issue for for these folks to do this, so.
But I think the purchase of a couple of signs, if we can use ARPA funds, is a good way to go, because we could use them anywhere else in town. And I know they fly by my place. I can't believe that they do fifty, sixty miles an hour in my place with those two sharp curves, but they can do it all the time.
And you said.
One of them signs kind of blocked by a mailbox. Difficult to see.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
The other one by Old Limerick Road is right down in the gully in the low area. If you're going east right after Limerick Road, you're not going to get a lot of speed, it's right there, because they slow down for that intersection.
Right. Right, so so location might be a challenge for them, huh? Okay. Okay. I'll look into the signs. I'll I'll double check if ARPA funds can be used for that. And obviously, if we we do, as I reported to you before, we have about eighty-seven thousand of ARPA funds remaining that we have to dedicate to some purpose before the end of December of this year. Then we have until twenty twenty-six, I think, to spend it. And then that will take a special town meeting to get approval from the voters to to use utilize those funds for that purpose. So I'll look into it and and report back to you on it.
December's coming quick.
Yeah.
I know.
Let
Make it easy.
Yeah.
Sure, we use it.
Grub know that we're working on it.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right, stickers for the transfer station.
Yes, you know, in in Dot's here tonight, so she can sort of weigh in on this, but she left me a phone message indicating that she was of the opinion that, I don't know if it's through personal observations or others, that number one, that are, that the Casella staff is not not checking stickers. And number two, that there are folks that are taking advantage of that without the checking of stickers that are coming from elsewhere to deposit their trash and recyclables here in Arundel. So I reached out to Casella, asked them to make sure that their staff has started, begin to monitor these stickers again, indicated to them that the stickers should be green. We went on to the website and our text message information through the town and encouraged folks to get their green stickers as residents. So we can try to curb any misuse of the transfer station by people outside of Arundel.
His stickers are green?
Green, yes.
Okay, I don't have my green. I would step up the red one.
So if somebody shows up with an out of state license plate.
Yeah.
And they get questioned about sticker and the comment is, oh, this is a rental truck.
This is one to what?
This is, this is a rental vehicle. I rented it to dump.
Too bad.
Well, then you ought to tell the Casella staff to make sure that they follow too.
Right.
Because I witnessed it.
Right, you can't, yeah, you can't rent, you know, we we don't, we don't have any control of that. I mean, I obviously, just another, you know, if they want to, if they want to use a rental truck, they can come down and get a pass from us. We will give them a pass. So if they go up there and they have a rental truck, they can say, I've got a pass from the town, here it is. We can make it good for a week or so. That way, our residents who don't have those trucks can utilize and get that stuff up there. But just arbitrarily saying, oh, I'm a resident and I've just borrowed this truck that doesn't fly.
Right, because the staff needs to enforce that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll reach back out to Chris, but that that, you know, those are the issues, I think, that some people try to take advantage. Obviously, folks need to look at the stickers. And Dot, if you have any other information relative to that, if you have other concerns or you're seeing something that we need to address, then let's get it addressed.
Is it something, is it Casella? I don't know how the contract went or anything like that, how we're paying them. But to me, it seems like you're asking them to go, because sometimes it's really, really busy there. So I just, my feeling on this is it's happening way more than we realize and it's going to hit us with our pocketbooks because we're going to be over the limit. You know, I don't even really know how that goes. But that's all I see, right? If we're having way more trash than what we anticipate, it's just, and I know what they pay, and that's why, in other towns, and I feel really fortunate because we're keeping it.
Right now, we pay, we pay two bills to Casella. We pay one for the staff. And then we pay, we pay one for the refuse, for the trash. And it's based on a tonnage amount and trucking. Right now, we're, it runs about fifteen, total together, it runs about fifteen thousand, fifteen to sixteen thousand a month. We have not seen that change at all. It's pretty consistent right now at that rate. We haven't overspent that portion of the budget in the last two budgets that we've had. So we've been okay that way, but obviously, the intent here is not to have folks from out of town getting rid of the trash.
Yeah, we could be paying more than what we actually need to pay. It hasn't gone up, but we could be paying more than what we actually.
That that is correct. If people are abusing it and the staff isn't monitoring it, obviously.
I have, I have two comments. One, the sign when you first get to the dump after you go by the transfer station. Shouldn't have a sign there that says, a Rundell residents only sticker required, even strictly enforced. Because there's nothing there that says that that person coming in needs a dump sticker. And secondly, the last time I was up there, there were three pickup trucks, one of them was always backed up to dump. And I said to the attendant, as they were helping us take the trash out of the back of the truck, would it be better for you to see the stickers if it was on the back window? And his comment was, no, because they're tinted, we wouldn't see the sticker anyway. And the truck next to me was parked so that I couldn't see whether or not there was a sticker on that truck. But they had a lot of stuff that they were dumping. And they weren't too upset about the fact that that maybe he didn't have a sticker. So they had three people, they could have had one person standing up there looking for stickers.
Correct.
And the other two down here, helping people unload.
So there was three people.
But there were three people, there were three staff there that day.
I know, I know the community I live in, they have a ongoing lit light sign that says stickers required. Must be affixed to the vehicle.
Yeah.
On the windshield, they put it on the windshield, so.
But they drive in, I mean, when you drive in.
You should be able to see a sticker.
Should be able to see a sticker on that windshield.
I go sometimes and it's so busy.
Yeah.
I, the only other, is recycling, when you say fifteen thousand, oh, are we paying for just trash? So the recycling is free?
Yep. Trucking, we may have some trucking costs there. I'd have to look at the bill again.
That's what I'm seeing too. I'm just thinking that that's going to come. I see some pretty dirty recycling.
Well, there, you know, the nationally, it's become a huge issue with plastic. They, you know, they can't, they don't have any market for it. So I don't know what's going to happen with that stuff, so. Yeah, it may evolve again for us, but are you aware of any personally that you're seeing up there? It almost sounded like you knew somebody who was doing it.
I've got names I can share with you that came across a Facebook post. And so, you know, the person's name and everyone I know does this.
Okay.
I do have that. Other than just seeing a lot of out of state plates and no stickers, I've seen that.
Well, out of state plates, the people at the end of our road, that are on their property are from Massachusetts. So if they were going up there, they have mass plates. And when I was there, there was a vehicle that was in, it was crooked. Again, I couldn't see if there was a sticker on the front. That had mass plates. But we have all the people from the cottages, so many of them. We have people that may be living in, I think, the mobile home park on on Campground Road.
You could have rentals, you could have renters, as long as they have, they've been able to prove that they have, need a sticker, they can come down here and get one. Yeah, and so they come in, they may come in with a rental agreement, they may come in with a a tax bill saying that they own property. And then if it's a house, if it's physically a house, because we've had, we've had other folks that have come in and said, oh, I own land here, why can't I use it? Well, you're not creating any, just because you own land doesn't mean you can use the transfer station, so. Even though now they do pay for it through tax dollars, but.
It makes me happy that we're not going over. If it ever gets to that, I would really be here recommending that we actually pay to, if you're not getting the Casella
Right.
to be consistent, I would, I would actually be the first to take a little bit of money and pay for some.
Okay.
Super, thank you guys.
Hey, while we're talking about the transfer station.
Yep.
I I wanted to check last time I was there, but a while back, we still had signs there, parking for the reuse room. There are still signs on that building for the reuse room. And it begs questions all the time. Can we get little signs out of there?
Yep.
And your best bet would be if we get the sign down where you first come in, that says sticker only. If if Casella's had somebody there and every time a vehicle got there and they had to stop them and said, you don't have a sticker, you'll have to, you can't come back until you get a sticker, you can't dump until you get a sticker. The only downside to that is that that person's going to get angry and they're going to have to throw it somewhere beside the road. Yeah, yeah.
I think that's the risk you you take. I mean, obviously, we, you know, we haven't had it occur yet.
Yeah.
We've required the stickers.
I've called Terry for air conditioners on the side of the road.
I'm sure you have.
You know, we had some on on the Limerick, Brimstone Road there for a while, a couple of mattresses, a couple of air conditioners.
Yeah, if we know they're there, we'll we'll come by and pick them up. Yep.
Okay. Voting credentials for MMA annual meeting.
Right, what I'm, what I'd be seeking is that I may be going to the MMA conference. The business meeting is going to be held on October second. And if I go, I would like to have the ability to vote at the meetings, and I would seek your motion and a second and approval, and then have you folks sign the document that I have here before me.
Come on.
Who seconded that? Jason. Paulson's made seconded, yep. Any comments? No, all in favor? You got it? You have a paper for us to sign?
Yeah. I think we need to, the other thing too is that we added the the two things under manager's report, and I forgot the report out on him, was the letter that we received from Mr. Washburn. He sent it to me via email today, wants to invite the select board. He's provided some information based on the intersection of Proctor and Old Post Road, thinking that it's a gateway area into Arundel, and it should look better than it does. Is encouraging lighting and some other things. And I'm not quite sure what you folks want to do with this particular issue at this point. When I read the letter, it appeared to me that most of the issues were related around MDOT's Route One road as opposed to Proctor Road. So I think it'd be more, and he's already reached out to the MDOT field office in Burwick or North Burwick to to have a conversation with them to get some work done on the island and things of that nature, so.
That island looks terrible.
So I don't know what you want to do for this, if you want to visit, don't want to visit. So I don't know what you want to do for this, if you wanna visit, don't wanna visit, um, wanna go down on your own, take a look at it. I'll just report back to him what you folks decide to do.
The light at Proctor Road, that's, that's CMP's light?
Well, yeah, C M, CMP owns the lights. We pay, we pay for the light to be there, obviously, um.
Wasn't there a, a discussion one time that CMP was gonna convert those lights to LEDs?
Yeah, they wanted to convert the lights to LED and wanted us to pay for the conversion. And we indicated to them, no, if you wanna turn them to LEDs, then turn them LEDs and we'll pay our fee.
Right.
As we always pay, so. And they, I think they will do it as those lights go out of, end their service life. I think you'll see LEDs replacing them, but uh, I'm not quite sure if there are any in, in Arundel at this point.
And he's right about the bridge. I mean, what they have done is taken an orange traffic cone, which of course is huge, and set it, if you're heading towards Bit of Bit, it sets right at the end of that island in the middle of the bridge. And um, of course, you know it's there because we travel the road, but anyone not traveling the road, if they're, get over too far to the left, they're gonna be right on that center.
Is there, is there a, a sign that says bear right?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing, no light, no nothing, just that little orange traffic cone right there.
Yeah.
So perhaps the state might want to, we want to get a hold of the state and ask them to please come down and and look and see if there isn't some type of striping or something that they could do there that would.
He's asking for additional lighting and I'm not quite sure if we, if the lighting obviously would be something that we would have to um, agree to, but.
Is there a light at the end of um,
There's an.
Old Post Road, where Old Post Road comes out? Must, there must be a light there.
Yeah, I think there is. And I think there's one at Proctor too, and I'm not sure if the light is not working or.
Yeah, and you have the bridge right in the middle of that, you have railroad bridge, which has no lights or anything on it at all.
I think that's kind of what he's asking.
Yeah.
There's a light to be put on the bridge, cause if he's talking about between the Proctor Road and, and the Old Post Road, well, then that's the bridge.
Yeah, it says additional lighting to the north south approach of the US Run, Route One Overpass. So he's looking for lighting too, so.
Never thought of that because of course we know it's there and we travel it all the time, but that, that, there is no lighting at all on that bridge.
I'm not quite sure what you wanna, wanna do with that.
Ask the state if they can.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd get in touch with them and ask them why there was no lighting whatsoever on that bridge.
Well, I certainly can reach out to um, uh, the DOT and, and say that we've had a resident express these concerns to us, send them a copy of the letter, see if there's anything they're gonna address within his concerns. Again, we can go down and make sure that the Proctor Road uh, Route One light is functioning. It was, for a while there, it was not functioning. Um, and again, I know Terry's been very vigilant about getting a hold of CMP to get those lights done, but oftentimes they get delayed and CMP has other issues that they, they feel is more, more pressing for them.
Took them forever to do the one that over here on Limerick Road and where New Road comes in and Clearview. That thing was down for I'd say almost a year before they did.
So I'll, I'll obviously reach out to DOT and provide them the letter and see what they wish they would do. But when I look at this, I don't think there's a lot there for the town to get involved in, other than expressing our concerns from a resident to DOT.
Well, it wouldn't surprise me if we go to the, to the DOT and say, hey, we'd like additional lighting put on Route One. You know what they're gonna say? Sure. You guys paid for it.
Yeah.
Correct.
That's exactly what will happen.
But isn't there usually lighting put on bridges that are on public ways like that, like Route One?
Um, I, you know, sometimes when people are doing community development uh, in communities, they'll, they'll put on those um, decorative street lighting along the, there. I don't think that's a location for that to be placed there, obviously. And that would be something that the, the town would have to fund, because I know that the M D O T would not fund those types of activities.
Even reflectors there might work. Yeah, so at least you know that give you, give you something there. Okay.
And finally, on that, um, the, I provided you a memo, uh, staff has looked at the schedule coming up uh, during the Christmas holiday and just discovered that Christmas falls on a Wednesday. They have um, they have half a day on Christmas Eve off, then they have Wednesday off because it's Christmas. They're seeking whether or not uh, you folks would provide uh, Thursday, the twenty second, to have the office closed.
Twenty six.
How about the twenty six?
Twenty six, I'm sorry.
Well, we don't have a holiday for the day after Thanksgiving anymore, because Thanksgiving's always on a Thursday and they don't work Friday anyway.
Correct.
So they don't have that any longer. I don't have a problem. What do you think?
It still leaves two days for the end of the month, thirty, thirty one.
Yes.
And then they'd have the following Wednesday off, right, New Year's Day, Saturday.
They would have New Year's Eve, but they would be back to work on that Thursday. It will not, you know, they're only requesting the Christmas.
Wanna make a motion on that?
Make a motion on that.
All right, Jason made a motion. We're gonna second that.
I'll second it.
I've seconded that. All in favor? They got it.
Thank you.
Okay, adopting the new version of the General Assistance Ordinance.
Uh, yeah, obviously, we didn't have much public comment, uh, public hearing comment on it, but again, yearly, we've adopted the state version of the General Assistance Ordinance and every year they provide us uh, changes in the um, in the uh, amounts that can be uh, allocated for certain activities. Be it food, be it rental assistance, heating assistance, uh, so on and so forth, so. We're requesting that uh, you folks adopt the newest version of the municipal of the General Assistance Ordinance, sign the paperwork and it would put those new va, new dollar amounts into play uh, for the upcoming year.
So, e- every year, we, we vote to use what the state recommends, right?
Yep. Because you've adopted the state regulations.
I don't, we just adopt the state regulations, don't have to vote on it every year.
We, I think you're required to vote on it because they make a change in the maximums that are allowed.
But those maximums that comes out of our, that comes out of our funds, right? That comes out of what we put in.
Well, we, we put aside fifteen thousand dollars a year to provide general assistance for folk. We get reimbursed seventy percent of that from the, from the fed, from the state.
That's why, cause that would affect whatever.
Right, so um, we generally get a lot of that funding back to us as a result of that.
Make a motion, we approve.
The new version of the General Assistance Ordinance?
Yep.
Yep. All right, do we have a second?
Just have a question on the recovery residents.
Yep.
The what?
Housing recovery residences.
Okay.
The math doesn't add up on weekly versus monthly, and I, which one's correct? Is it, I would assume that the two sixteen seventy five needs to increase to equal the nine thirty one fifty?
Uh, well, I think they, they provide a weekly amount and then a monthly amount, so I'm not sure that the math would, would equate. Yeah. There may be a time where we'd only provide a monthly amount and it may, somebody may come in and only need weekly. So that's why they, I think they do it that way. It looks like it went down back for the uh, the monthly went up, but the weekly went down. Yeah. Yeah, don't ask me why.
We've got a motion? Do we have a second?
Who, who made the motion?
I did.
Dan, okay.
I'll second it.
Second, all right. Any other comments or questions?
Wendy's looked at this, obviously, and.
Yeah, this comes from Wendy. She, she gets the, she gets the information, she puts out the public hearing notice. She provides all these documents for you to.
Goes through them too and.
Yes.
This all makes sense to her.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor? There we go. Okay, business hours for voter registration.
Uh, yes, um, the town clerk is once again requesting a waiver of the evening hours to and allow the voter registration hours to be coincide with our office hours. Uh, we will need a motion in a second to approve that.
I think we've done this every year.
Yes, you have.
We need a motion.
Motion to approve the request.
Motion's made by, by Tom. Do I have a second? And seconded, I've got, all ready? All in favor? There, she's got it. And we have to sign this.
Have we ever not voted to do this? Or not, why don't we change that permanently then?
Um, we can, I think it's part of the statute. You have to, you have to vote to go out of it every year. The statute requires that we'd have evening hours and there is a provision in there to waive that. If so, does.
So this isn't part of charter?
No.
Yeah.
So if so approved by municipal officers.
Okay, we have the confirmation of the election warden.
Yes, again, the clerk is um, uh, may, wishes to confirm the appointment of Sylvia Perol as um, election warden for the upcoming election.
The move. Who, who seconded it? Who?
Dan.
Dan and Jason.
Jason, yeah.
A little more enthusiasm would help. They haven't voted yet, right?
Oh, that's right. Uh, all in favor?
I like that one, Dan, thank you.
Yeah, that was, just in case there was.
Any questions?
I didn't expect anybody.
And the payables warrant.
I make a motion, we accept the payable warrant as presented.
Do we have a second?
Nothing would make me happier this evening than to second Dan's motion on the payable warrant.
All in favor?
Touche, gentlemen, touche.
Maybe we should do a yay instead of all in favor. Any other comments or?
Nothing would make me happier than to make a motion to adjourn.
I will gladly second that motion.
I think we heard that loud and clear.
Yes, we did, thank you.
All in favor? There we go. Thank you very much, gentlemen.